Father, we thank you for this time that we have here tonight. And we thank you for being able to do the business of the city, to take care of the residents in this town, and to do the best job we can. We ask that you guide our thoughts and to help us to take care of the business tonight as it needs to be done for the health and safety of this community. We thank for all that are present. We pray these in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don Rawlins.
Here.
Ed Stout.
Here.
Julie Schaefer.
Bill Sargent.
Here.
Anita Lowry.
Here.
Shane Donahue.
Mike Nelson.
Here.
Jan Throgmorton.
Here.
The city attorney, Tom Kicklack. Marcia Hungate, our city clerk, and myself, Charlie Rosetti. The adoption of the agenda. I would like to add, if you all will go to new business on the backside of the page, I'd like to add two items there. You have the paperwork in front of you. We didn't get this out earlier, but the first one, for number one, under new business would be policies and procedures, invoices and checks. And I have a motion to amend the agenda to include, as number one, new business, policies and procedures for invoices and checks.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed by like sign. Okay. Item number two under new business, updated tobacco policy. You have that in front of you as well. I'll entertain a motion to add that to the agenda.
I'll make it.
Second.
Second. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed by like sign. Okay. Is there any other changes to the agenda? Can we approve the agenda then, as amended?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed by like sign. Approval of the minutes?
I make a motion we approve the minutes as they stand.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed by like sign. It's going quick.
I'll jinx it.
We have a public forum at this time. In our public forum, we allow two minutes per speaker. All remarks are addressed to the city council. The council and mayor may ask questions of the speaker or respond to questions or comments. No official action will be taken on any part of their public forum. Do we have anybody that would like to come forward to speak to the council? All right. Okay. Thank you. Sandra? Sandra Smith is city clerk for City of Fayetteville and president of the Arkansas City Clerk Recorder Treasurers Association. And she has an award that she would like to present tonight. And Kristy Drummond, could you please come forward, please?
I'm actually outgoing president, but it's my honor to be able to present. The Arkansas City Clerk Recorder's Treasurers Association presents Kristy Drummond, city treasurer for the city of West Fork, with the designation of Certified Municipal Arkansas Clerk. This is a significant accomplishment and exemplifies Kristy's accomplishments and commitment to continuing education. Kristy's dedication and contributions to her community are to be commended. And it's quite an honor for me to present this because I've known Kristy since you were little.
Did you both get your pictures?
So to be in the same profession and to see everything that she's accomplished and work with her during training sessions has been an honor.
Kristy, thank you. Sandra, thank you for coming down to us.
Thank you.
We offer you the invitation to stay and listen to the rest of this.
I'm gonna stay for a little bit.
Oh, good.
Been in my cities for a long time.
All right. Let me back up. We need to approve the minutes of the special meeting. Were you trying to get my attention there, Jan, to do that?
No.
Okay. All right. Let's back up for, under approval of minutes, we have approval, I needed a motion for the approval of the special minutes for the date June 19, 2014.
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed by like sign. Our business reports. Paletta, do you have anything for us?
I don't. I came back from vacation yesterday, so I'll have two reports next month.
Okay. All right. I'll give you spots two and three then. Planning commission, I think they had a meeting this last week, but we can read those on the website if we need to. Police department. Chief Collins is usually here and gives his reports. His mother-in-law passed away, so that family is busy taking care of all of that. And so I told him if he could come tonight, fine. If not, that would be fine as well. His reports are in there. You can look through those. If you have any questions on that, I might be able to answer some of those. If not, we'll just bring that up at the next council meeting. I would, let me do one thing. On West Fest, we have that sheet in your packets. The committee members on West Fest this year is, of course, Chief Collins, Kira Hungate, Clay Hungate, Misty Cottle, Elena Brandon, Nancy Curtner, Frances Hardison, Nikki Redkey, and Rose Parker. And the events that they have scheduled as of this week is the parade, so we have that back. And, of course, it's gonna happen all out here on the railroad right away. Horseshoe tournament. I think somebody's already in practice for the horseshoe tournament. Is that right, Megan?
What happened?
I don't know.
No one was there. It was very sad.
No one was there? All right. We'll advertise more.
Thank you.
Possible car show, they're waiting for the commitment on that. Hot dog eating contest, I'm gonna avoid that for lots of reasons, but it should be fun for someone. Smokehouse with the Washington County Fire Marshal. I'm not sure about what that is. Is that smokehouse? That must be hamburgers and smoked meat.
That's the trailer.
Nope.
One of our kids already been through that. We have them all covered now, except kindergarten to the 12th grade have been through that. But there'll still be some that'll wanna go through that again.
Yeah. So we're smoking the firefighters. All right. Dutch oven cook-off. Live music should be great. Nature-related programs with West Fork Park's intern. Megan, raise your hand back there. Boy Scouts of America volunteering time to earn badges in their camping. States, we are receiving vendor applications at this time. Some vendors have paid, some have yet to commit but have showed high interest. The Porky Chicks BBQ has showed interest and are waiting on their commitment. The White River United Pentecostal Church has asked for a food vendor booth along the dump tank and the bake sale booth. West Fest committee will meet on July 14 at 7:00 PM at the West Fork Police Department. So, and that's always open to the public. You're welcome to go there.
I understood, Mayor, that you and all the council volunteered for that dunking booth.
We'll move on. And I don't wanna see that in the minutes. And they have some concerns about porta-potties, dumpsters, and their budget, so we'll work those out if we need to. All right. Butch, streets and utilities?
Yes. First, I'd like to thank Sandra for being here tonight to present that to Kristy and, of course, congratulate Kristy on her continued education. She does a wonderful job down there with the city, but she also does a lot of things for the water and sewer utility, which is a big part of our job. Continues to be great, and we're very fortunate to have her. Thanks for a job well done, Kristy. Sandra. The other thing, there's a commission meeting minutes attached. Pretty well self-explanatory. I'll go into update on the wastewater project, and Mr. Robert White's here with us tonight. Robert, you wanna kinda get up and let them know about our latest report?
I think the latest significant situation is the sewer system valuation survey work is ongoing and continuing. They're doing manhole inspections in the area. They've done six or seven weeks of flow monitoring, and Butch has got a copy of this. I don't know if he shared it to y'all or not. But basically, the flow monitoring they did this spring has came up with lower flows than what they were seeing last year when Fayetteville had them come down here, flow monitoring. And I think a lot of it's due to the work your guys have done to seal up some holes in the system. So we were excited to see that while the risk still infiltration inflow, and there's still gonna be expense associated with getting rid of that, and they're still going through the process of looking for it. And here in a few weeks, they'll be doing smoke testing and creating havoc throughout the city, doing that, I'm afraid. But that's, the initial flow monitoring results are pretty positive compared to what we were seeing a year ago. I think that's good news. Other things are just pretty much going on and trying to get this sewer system evaluation survey done so we can move forward with the other phases of the project. That work has to be done before they'll let us make any significant progress on anything else. Anything else, Butch, I need to touch on?
No, I can fill the rest of it. I did put a copy of the revised preliminary schedule for the project for all the council members, see that we've been working on it. We submitted to the state.
That is preliminary. They go through it probably and tell me I'm out of line, and I need to do that faster and hurry up every chance I get. So it's not a final schedule.
Right. It's not a final schedule, but they asked us to submit one, and we did with the best information we had available. And, of course, a lot of this is gonna depend on the funding and the grant money or the loans that they're talking about, which are loans or forgiveness. We used to call them grants. A lot of this time schedule is gonna be based on that and the outcome of these tests that we have. But one thing I'd like to touch on that Robert mentioned, we have made significant improvements in the last year with our own crews identifying two or three main lines that were crushed or damaged by contractors sometime in the past that we were unaware of, and we found those and repaired them. Looks like we cut the flow, you know, somewhere around 25 percent just on what we've done in-house in the last year. So like Robert said, we were tickled to death when we got those results from the flow monitoring people that had made that much difference. But we continue to work on those. And the milestone schedule is we'll get results back from the state on that to see how they want us to push the timing up on it. Another thing I need to bring to the council is that we have a statement of qualifications for the engineering services that was attached in your report. The Water and Sewer Commission authorized McClellan engineers back 2011 to be engineer on this project. And, of course, we sent letters out to all the property owners notifying that this is a survey, and McClellan's been authorized to proceed with the design and engineering on the sewer line and the improvements to the system. And the funding agency has this letter, and just to make sure that everyone's on the same page, they wanted a, some minutes or something from the city council saying that they were in agreement with what we were doing, so there wasn't a discrepancy. You know, in the past, we've had some mayors and commissions that didn't agree on things. And those funding agencies, it makes them real nervous. They get shaky when there's, when everyone's not on the same page when it comes to these large amounts of money. And so, you know, I just asked the council if they would entertain supporting the Water and Wastewater Commission's authorization for McClellan to be the engineer on this certain project. They are engineer of record, and that's all on file. But since the funding is just for this project, the sewer only, they wanna make sure the council was understanding that and that the Water and Sewer Commission, the council, and the mayor were all working together in agreement. So I just need the council to, you know, approve that. It'd be in the minutes, and then I could mail that along with these other loan documents. And Robert, if I'm leaving anything out, you can have a jump in here. I'm just talking from the memory and the information that I've gotten from the government and funding agencies. And they want some kind of assurance that the mayor and council is aware of what's going on.
Let's do this now. Let's do this with a motion to approve McClellan Engineering as the engineering firm of record for this wastewater project.
I'll make it.
Second? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed by like sign? All right. As matter of public record, Marcia, is unanimous vote to endorse McClellan Engineering as a firm of record.
And like I say, just if I could get a copy of those minutes, and in your packet there, you had a letter dated October 3, 2012, sort of had to do with engineering surveys and the wastewater system improvements, where the water commission had approved this. And we sent letters out to all the property owners that are involved in this project and land that we were gonna have to be crossing, survey, and staking, and doing these geological studies and all that. I know there've been a couple of you's been questioned that they didn't receive notification for this project. Well, someone's mistaken. That's not correct. We sent all these by certified mail. They had to sign for them, and they picked them up. And every property owner, those were picked up and they received it. And we went back and talked to one lady, didn't think she had one. She got, she had gotten the letter, and since it had the state health department stuff on, she thought it was from Little Rock. And she thought it was from the state health department. It was actually from us, and I had signed it. And so we cleared that up. But another thing was McClellan says Little Rock office, and I think maybe some of their documentation I stuck in there had maybe Little Rock's address on it of return from McClellan. But anyway, we have, we do have those. One thing Robert didn't mention, we met for the last time, I hope, with the property owners around Baptist Ford Cemetery and the property owners there, which we redesigned the pipeline through there three or four times with different routes. And we have, I'm happy to say, we have all that settled. Everyone's in agreement. I got the property owners new drawings with their location priorities. Was it last week, Robert? The surveyors finished new ones. I just hand-delivered it to the property owners, and they're all happy with it. So we have, as far as I know, everyone is in agreement with the route. We've submitted this new route as the established route for the geological and other surveys. That's a big step behind us. So we had the statement of qualifications. The rest of the stuff there are pretty self-explanatory. I won't update you on the school projects. They're going well. We made, we're working well with the contractors, and they're being helpful to us. And those utility additions and restructure and relocations have been going, going well. We're lucky enough to have one of our own citizens here that's kind of in charge of most of that. So it makes it easy to work with people that you know and trust. There's some other information in there about some street lighting that was requested and repairs and some problems we had. We have addressed those and taken care of them. And we've applied for some state aid for street paving in this upcoming year. Hopefully, we'll be, receive some grant money to do those projects with. Mayor, anything you wanna add to that part?
That's a good grant, and it rotates around through different small towns. It's $250,000, which will give us somewhere around mile and a half of resurfacing, somewhere between one and two miles of resurfacing in town. And Butch and Jerry Spillers have identified streets in town that are in the worst repair. We've kinda spotted them around several areas in the town to try to get to different neighborhoods. And that's what we submitted for this year. So we'll probably know something by the first of the year on that. If we don't get it this year, we might likely get it the following year. So this is a nice little fund to have, and it'll go a long way in West Fork to resurface streets.
It's not for new construction. It's just for resurfacing repairs of existing streets. And we tried to look at, you know, north, north, south, east, and west, and try to pick out the streets, some in every council member's district, where we didn't just have it all condensed into one. So we tried to be as equal as we could with all the districts in the city and still take care of the worst areas. So there was a lot of thought went behind putting that project together, and we've identified maps and distance and everything they asked. So they're gonna be coming to do the measuring themselves to check our numbers and our work with the state. And then they'll provide their own, I guess, results to the mayor and the council on that. Anything else that you see in the report there that you have questions or concerns about?
Okay. Thank you, Butch. Mr. Bowerman? Chad Harrison?
I want to introduce tonight our new parks employee, Chad Harrison, which many of us know here in West Fork. Spent many years at Superfoods and Hometown Foods, and Pigly Wiggly, whatever name it had. But he spent many years, and so he is our new parks director. And we wanted to, I know he doesn't really need introduction, but we wanted to introduce him to you anyway and say, here he is. And it'd be the last time he'd have to deal with me, hopefully for a long, long time. And you'll be dealing with Chad. And I handed him the keys last Thursday and said, see ya. It's all yours. But we are excited to have Chad on board and just what he's gonna bring to our commission and to our parks and to our community. We had a lot of calls when Chad applied for the job, you know, just from different individuals, not just in our community, though, outside of our community as well. And so we feel like we've done a great job of hiring. Had almost 30 applicants, broke it down to five top applicants that we interviewed. Chad was one of those five. And so really, it was really hard, to be honest with you. It was a really hard choice. Chad's interview is kinda what won the commission over, but we're excited to have him. Just finished our big 4th of July celebration. Went extremely well. I know we have some parking issues and getting out on time issues and all that, but we wanna thank the fire department. We wanna thank police department, just all those who helped get cars out in a timely manner this year. I do wanna take time and thank our, those who gave this year to the 4th of July, because I think it's big for the council to understand that all of the food is paid for by donation. Every bit of that is paid for by donation. Harps is our biggest sponsor. That's why they're on the signs and all the flyers that we put out. They're kind of our keynote sponsor. We also have Unity Covenant Church, First Baptist Church, that helped sponsor Bank of Fayetteville, Arvest helped sponsor, Chevy was a sponsor, Coca-Cola. They didn't give, quote, "money." Those that we listed above were money gifts. But Coca-Cola gave us drinks and 23 cases of water on top of other drinks that they gave us. Highland Dairy donated ice cream. Trash Away donated three dumpsters and then a trailer for bag trash. That's big. That's really big. And so we're very, very thankful for all of those after donations and everything. We were under budget on that event. After we took in all of our donations, we stayed under budget, and so we were very, very excited about that. One thing, and I'm not sure, I need to talk to Butch about this or whomever, but we need a few street signs that say Carter Park, which we don't presently have, just kinda pointing there, because Kristy could help me with this. We had somebody called Kristy all the way from Tulsa and said, man, we come to northwest Arkansas to watch 4th of July, and we keep hearing that West Fork is the place to go. Can you tell us how to get there? And so, you know, that's a great, a great thing for our community, because if they come here, they're gonna see the gas station, Harps, all that's gonna bring revenue back to our community. And I know a lot of people from Devil's Den that are staying there are starting to make it an annual event. I met a big family of about 20 who said they came last year and planned the same week at Devil's Den so they could come back to the fireworks display and all of that. And so ended up well, and we're done with our search. We found Chad, and we're excited he's here. He's gonna be great for our community. Any questions from the city council tonight at all?
Didn't pass the target. I'm sure the target.
Yeah, yeah. We haven't given it to him yet, Jan. You're kinda letting that out of the bag. He has to wear a T-shirt with the target on it. No, no. But anyway, a lot of great help, a lot of community support with our fourth celebration. The Boy Scouts were a big help in trash cleanup. They worked real hard. And then Frances Hardison and all the music, a lot of, lot of positive things about the music. Just so some of you know, because we've had a few questions, what's the big trench that was dug down there at Carter Park? That is the internet that's going in, and what that's gonna do with our internet security is big. It's gonna allow us to remotely view Carter Park, which is our greatest vandalized area in our park system. It's kinda funny, ever since we put the cameras in, vandalism has gone down quite a bit. You know, that just happens that way sometimes. But it'll also not just allow us to remote view it, but we'll be able to give the council members password and username and all that, and you guys will be able to remote view it as well. The other thing it does, as we grow that system, we're able to put locks on the door that Chad will be able to just pick up his iPhone and hit lock the door, and it'll lock it. He'll be able to turn off lights and different things. Now, that is as we grow. That is at a cost, and so as it is prohibitive according to our budget, we'll be able to do some of those things. So just really, you know, we're really excited about the connectivity there, and that was part of a grant that Justin Harris, our state representative, helped us achieve. And so all of that that we're doing with that is part of grant money as well. Okay? If nothing else, no questions, we're done.
I would like to thank Brian and all the park commission members for the hard work and the extra time that they put in during the absence of a park director. I know they did a lot. I just look forward to working with them, working with the council and the community to just keep improving and bettering our park system. I'm excited. Thanks, guys.
Steve Harrison?
I want Steve to do the presentation and explain what all Mark has done. And Mark's had a rough week. He lost his dad this week, and it's been kinda crowding for him. Steve can explain to you what a good job he did.
Most of you know who I am. Yes, I do know Chad and Brian. You didn't have a bad choice. I just wanted to bring guys up to speed on what's been going on with our new firefighters. Mark attended.
Mark attended, just graduated the 13th of last month from the Fire Academy. He spent seven weeks down there in some, you know, it was kind of like a vacation. He didn't have to do a lot of it. Seven weeks of five days a week of grueling work. He finished that. One of the things that we did want to recognize him for and you guys to know is the Fire Academy has had a, an outstanding achiever award on their books for, and I don't remember exactly the number of years they said, somewhere between 15 and 20 years. They have never presented that award to anyone until this year. They presented it to Mark. Every instructor that I came in contact with, I went down to his graduation. He would introduce me to their instructors and at some point, one of them would come around and tell me how, how he never slowed down. He never allowed any of the younger, and by the way, he was the oldest fire cadet there. Every one of them were younger than him. And in the bunker gear, they have a alert they have to do, an exercise that they have to get in from, from sleeping into their bunker gear and ready to go on the truck. And he was never beat the entire time. Nobody beating even the young guy. So they, again, like Mitch said, on a different note, this week we lost one of our Rural Fire Association board members who was one of our firefighters. And after he was in a car accident, was no longer to be a firefighter. So he got on our board, which happened to be Mark's dad, Fletcher Myers. Big loss for the fire department, for the Rural Fire Association here for Mark. So, but that's what's going on with the fire department. And Mark and Travis are working hard and keeping the fire department cleaned up. Truck's looking good, everything ready to go. They're doing a good job for the city and for the rural association. Any questions about?
If you have some time during the day, stop by up there and just talk with them. It's, you know, it's, I don't get up there often enough, but I always enjoy it when I go. Mark, thank you very much. Counsel?
Now, really lucky for us to have that pair, the first go-around on hiring, help. And they've done a super job. I didn't know what the trucks and the floors and the whole building could be that clean. I've never seen it that way. And another thing I wanted to mention, when you do the smoke test, that smoke comes up in your front yard, that's not the beginning of a volcano. Call Butch, that's his dog.
All right. So you guys are going to be shutting your phones down that day then.
I mean, no emergencies allowed that day.
All right. Christie, do you have anything for us?
I don't have anything specifically. If you have any questions, we've done.
I remember on her financial statements now, she's got new software, she's added some information there. She didn't have anything outstanding this year, so there's no color coding on, I mean, this month. So there's no color coding on it. But look for highlighting on those reports and she will highlight things that are a little out of ordinary in the future. So, thank you, Christie. All right. We are to old business. Don Rollins, do you have some business you want to bring before the council at this time?
Yes, I do. I've had several citizens contact me and they're concerned about Shane's seat on the council because he apparently isn't living in West Fork now. And I don't know, I feel like the right thing to do is, is for Shane to resign and let somebody else on to the council if he's not in the city. I don't know what we need to do, but that's, I'd like to see some, something done. And I've talked to Shane and he's, he's not living there. And he's not going to move back.
Do we have anyone else that would like to comment on this?
Well, we didn't do anything with the other one that was not showing up. We were told we couldn't do anything as long as he's not coming to the meeting. I don't know that we can do anything, Kim.
Well, you know, the statute says that a council member lives in the city and in their ward, which he doesn't. Now, there's no action that the council can take to remove him from that position. And Tom, correct me if I'm wrong here, but we've had a few conversations about this.
Can we ask him to resign since?
Yes, we can go that route. We can do that as a council. You can do that as a council. You certainly can.
That's what we should do probably is just ask him to resign if he's not living in our community, then it's not his concern anymore. So we'd probably do it.
Mr. Pickler?
Absolutely. Jan, you can definitely ask him to resign. And I've, in the papers quite a bit a year or two ago, I've been on the cutting edge of this very problem around here with people who have asked me to help city councils and other organizations helping remove such members. And it comes down to residency and Arkansas doesn't mean residency like we all think it does. It doesn't mean that at all. And it's very difficult to determine where someone lives when it comes to electoral politics in Arkansas. And so y'all have all been familiar with some of those more infamous cases, probably the Hudson Brothers. But anyway, you could ask him to resign. And in addition to that, if you, if we get our backs against the wall and we need someone in that seat and he's not showing up and we don't think he's eligible anyway, and we're worried about the votes that he takes affecting our business, we could even take a much more drastic step of declaring the seat vacant. I just don't recommend that we litigate that. So if we declare it vacant and that helps him move along, that's great. If he says, no, 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 I'm fighting you, we'll say, okay, come on back and cure your problem, move back into your ward, you know, and show us that you're there.
My conversation with Shane, I don't think that he would fight anything. I think he's willing to do that, but we just need to ask him.
Right. And thank him for his service and ask him to resign and then we'll go about getting that vacancy filled. So you're going to make the mayor do that, right?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Well, I just think we should write him a letter of thanking for service and asking for his resignation since he's not here. That's not too bad.
Yeah, that's, everybody good with that?
Let Poggin do it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
All right. Ozark Regional Transit, we have a report on our bus service.
Yes, West Fork now has a bus service. Thank you for seeing me, mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Jeff Hatley. I'm the mobility manager and public information officer at Ozark Regional Transit. And we are growing in general. Obviously, we're growing in West Fork, so much so in general that Joel and I are now splitting forces. He's actually in Johnson speaking to their city council tonight. So we're, we're trying to cover all our bases, so we're having to split forces a little bit to do that. I'll be as brief as possible. We, the report I have here is from January through May. Obviously, the new route 620 that services West Fork started June 2nd. So the numbers for that particular route aren't in this report, but I do have some numbers for that. For the January through May of calendar year 2014 as compared to 2013, we actually had four less operable days because of the implement weather. It seemed like all the icy roads always hit us on Monday morning for some reason back in January, February. But despite that, despite having four days less this year than we had last year, our service overall has actually increased. Of course, we've added some more routes too, but even ridership on the existing routes have increased. And the paratransit, which has always been in place in West Fork for the last 10 years, it has grown 15% as compared to the same period 2013, even with the four less days. For the fixed route, the route 620 that serves West Fork all the way to Lincoln and back, we've had 25 people get on and 25 people get off in West Fork. Now, that doesn't sound like a whole lot, but from what I'm understanding about people who've been in the transit business for a long time, that's significant because when you think about it, the route is brand new. So it's brand new to everybody. There's no repeat ridership. They're all people getting on it for the first time, figuring out how to get to where they're wanting to go for the first time. So we see that as a very positive indicator and we think that this route's going to really, really take off. With that, I'll leave it open for questions, concerns.
Counsel?
And I did see the bus just as I was pulling up to the parking lot tonight. So we are here in fact.
I did find out, if you stand on the side of the road and raise your hand, you'll stop.
Oh, well, good. Don't stand in an intersection. You won't stop for your intersection. With the permission, I'm going to hand out my business cards just in case anybody doesn't have them already.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I also brought in some of the routes right there by the phone.
Okay.
If anyone here needs a bus route, they're right there.
We have those and we have those in city hall all the time. So spread the word around, they can come in and get those routes from us. Have you all written? They're all looking down.
No, he doesn't go to his soft buffer. It's hard to do it. Does it run on the weekend?
It does not run on the weekend.
Okay, so that makes it tough for us.
That's, that's one of our 10-year plans, but when we do that, we're going to do the whole route, or I mean, the whole system, the whole thing. We're not going to do it halfway. We're going to do it full bore. But that's about 10 years. It's on the 10-year plan.
But I do have to say, I work at the VA hospital and you guys help our bets out a lot.
Yes, we do.
Well, syrup is always full ridership.
Yes, yes, we do.
Great service. Thank you. All right, we've had the West Fest report. All right, last, last month, I brought up the on-call for the police department and for comp time for the police department. And you have a TAD sheet that I updated some, tried to make it a little more easily understood. And so what we're looking at here basically is that currently the officers are working 36 hours, being paid for 40. Those four extra hours are being used to defray the costs on comp time because the police department is being paid for comp time. And, or for on-call time. And so Chief Collins and I sat down several months back. He showed me his idea about doing this. I thought that was probably a pretty good solution to that. But what's happening in this is we're losing a lot of hours of patrol time throughout a year. And the information that Chief Collins got us last month showed us that there were, up until this month, there were, there were only eight on-call callouts for this whole year and amounted to about six hours of time was all. But what we're paying is we're paying four hours of comp time for a patrol officer per week. And so those numbers get pretty significant after a while. And I have, I have those on this sheet. If we just take the average of the pay at $17.97, about $18 an hour, we're looking at close to $19,000 in cost, possible cost by, if we went to a 40-hour week for the officers, paid the on-call time, that would be the cost to the city for that comp time during on-call. The discussion, one of the discussions was that the city crew is getting comp time on the weekends. But they actually come out every weekend, they put in those hours, taking readings at the sewer plant and at, I believe, at two, one or two other locations. So they are, they are on duty and they are working during those hours. The on-call time for the police officers is approximately between 1:00 and 7:00 in the morning, those late hours with very few callouts. So I have put this together for the council, for your consideration. Our, just our reduction in, in patrol time for a year is over 800 hours. By having a 36-hour week rather than a 40-hour week. So that could, that could open up those patrol hours for a little bit longer during the day. Right now, generally, you guys have about a one-hour overlap so that you can talk to each other around 3:00. There's that overlapping time between the patrol officers. And they just kind of report to each other, tell them what's going on during that day, any information needs to be done. So that would still stay intact. Any questions from the council?
Is, are they going to make the change and go back to 40 hours? Is that the plan?
Yes. Yes, that's what this lays out. Yes, that's what would happen. They would go to a 40-hour week. And they're, they're working an eight-hour day. Their lunches included in that or their supper. And that's typical for, I think, most departments around the area.
Well, because you can't just take an hour off because you're going to get called out during that hour and you have to go anyway.
So they'll have, they'll, sorry, they'll have their 40 hours and then if they do go out on call, they get paid for that? And not just comp time, they actually get paid for it?
Yes. No, they get comp time.
They get comp time.
The, going to the 36-hour week was just his choice so that he didn't have to give the comp time.
Right.
So, I mean, that was his management choice. But I just, if we change this city rule that we have in place, then I'm certainly, I want to see that this number 10 is in effect, that the chief also takes his share because he wears a badge just like the rest of them. Soon he's going to by this being down here.
So we're talking about a 40-hour work week. Then if they get called out, they've got comp time. So then we've got to cover, well, if they get comp time and they take time off for that comp time, then they, we've got to cover for that?
But that's just the way it has to be figured out.
Yeah. And up till now during this year, that would be a total of six hours.
That just does not seem possible to me. I don't think that's correct because I, I did that for 20 years. We never had that little call out. It's just not possible. But that's new here in the Bay. That's just record, that can easily be pulled. That's just almost new. And it just, it just didn't happen.
So is, is comp time standard as opposed to paying overtime?
Well, what we haven't.
Because it's not the same thing.
Or we don't have the budget for it.
Christie, you want to speak to that?
You're, you're getting paid time and a half whether you're taking it off or actually getting the money. And that is a department head's choice. They, our policy states that they can earn or that they can accumulate up to 80 hours of comp time. If they get over that, we have to pay them overtime. But that is basically a, this department head's decision of, do I have the budget to be able to pay them overtime? Typically, most of our employees want the comp time versus the overtime.
Right. And I understand that, but I also understand that when you give somebody comp time, then you're paying somebody else hours to work for them. So it's not the same thing.
When you're giving them comp time, basically.
Well, I mean, so it just becomes a big snowball.
That's right.
And I guess what I don't understand is why isn't it just overtime and not give comp time and just pay overtime? And if it's that little, then it's not that big a deal. But if you keep doing comp time, then it, it has to snowball, it has to get bigger because the next guy has to cover for that guy. And then somebody, you know, it just, I don't, I don't get that.
Well, some of that can be covered by the chief because he's on himself. He's head of the department.
The comp time can be monitored. I mean, we, it's not usually so far that you can't, that it's so far out of hand you can't do it.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying it's not, you know, it may be technically the same thing, but it's not because you're winding up paying somebody, two people. When you give comp time, you're paying two people. You're paying one guy and then you're paying another guy to cover it. So you're paying twice.
And that's just something that's going on. The issue here, of course, was just simply giving. The issue here, of course, was just simply giving a guy comp, giving him some reward for having to take call.
Right, I understand that.
And the chief doesn't agree with that, and that's his prerogative, so if that's the case, just try to reduce it to the smallest amount which man has to take.
Right, and to me, if it's not that much, if it's not that many hours that you get called out, then time and a half is reward, is your reward, I mean, that's...
Is that usually done when we have more than one officer on duty?
It's what, it's what?
I mean, how often do we have more than one officer on duty?
Almost never, except in the summer, if you would, with that fourth officer.
Right.
I did some checking, and I might not even call the Labor Department, because I was concerned about it, and in Arkansas, you are not required to compensate for on-call time. You are if they're called out. But just to be on-call, you do not have to compensate, so legally, we can do that, not compensated, because they are, they will be compensated if they get called out, but just to sit there at home, you do not have to do anything for them for that.
Would it be cheaper to do like a stipend for being on-call?
I don't know, but if, but if every, if there's five officers and each one takes a night, then you, then you only have two more nights to deal with, that at least helps out. But when that, when one guy doesn't take any call, and then the school officer doesn't take any, then it's down to just three taking the call, and that's significant. So, I mean, if we're gonna, if the chief doesn't wanna do it, we support that, that's fine, just so they all take it, and someday, maybe, we'll get some part-time or another officer, and that'll eliminate a lot of that. That's the biggest key to it right there, is to get somebody to work it, and you don't have to worry about the on-call.
We have, I thought it was in this packet, right now, the police department accumulated comp time is gonna average for four officers, about thirty or thirty-five hours that they have accumulated comp time to this point. So, even with that in place, working that short week, they're doing that, and I'm sure that's covering shifts, covering, the comp time that's been accumulated, it's covering shifts, covering vacation.
That can be monitored quite a bit. The covering shift can be really monitored.
Monitor.
You can pretty much eliminate the comp time on that type situation.
There are comp times on the police report.
Just looking for that.
That's just their balance of what they had, and they, of course, have to keep it down, so. All right, there's no problem with doing it, if that's what we wanna do, legally, we can do it, and they just won't get any reward, and they'll get it if they're called out, and if they're only on a night a week, maybe a little bit more, and if the calls really are that minute, you wouldn't get much, but...
Well, I can certainly go back and ask Chief Collins to look at those figures again, but I asked him to take that off of, I specifically asked him to take that off the time sheets so that we had an accurate record from January through the present.
That would be six calls in six, one a month, and I'm telling you, that is not accurate, unless it's sure changed an awful lot since I left.
We had Sergeant Nelson have four calls for four hours, Officer Ingles for two calls, one hour, Kathy Gilliam, one call, and Mike Ball, one call.
Can I ask?
Butch? Yeah?
It says in here that Chief Collins was opposed to this, what was he opposed to? I didn't catch that part.
During the budget, during the budgeting of comp time, he didn't support the comp time for the police department. And that was back in November, December?
So, basically, what it really takes is, we're changing a personnel rule, and so that's why we need the action to change that personnel rule that we put into place last year.
Yeah, we have comp time in place for police department, water and sewer, streets and utilities.
Right.
Well, if we take one, we have to take them all, don't we?
No, no, no.
No, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not saying let's do that, but don't get excited.
Well, I mean, you're talking about two different worlds here.
They actually were.
Water and sewer, yeah, water and sewer employees in the street, okay, they have definite functions, every Saturday, Sunday, seven days a week, people drink and use water and they waste it.
Right.
The plant has to be operated every day.
Yes.
And it's two trips a day, usually at least an hour if everything's functioning, an hour in the morning, an hour afternoon, and then you have to go to the pump stations, check all your pumps, write down their time of operation, check the meter usage, elevate your flow valves, altitudes of pressure sustaining valves and downstream areas, but all that together is at least four hours a day, whether it be Saturday, Sunday, or whatever. That's if everything is functioning properly. If you have a problem, that's go back to electrical, goodness for that, but those people are actually working those four hours on Saturday and Sunday with no choice. It's not like being on-call, and I'm not saying that, that anything against or for...
But I'm just saying that it's a personnel policy.
But I'm saying you can't, you can't have a regulation that covers both situations because they're not the same. Those guys are actually working those four hours every day, whether it be Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
All you're saying is, you get paid when you work, that's all you're saying. You get paid when you work, it's that simple. You either wanna pay them when they work, or you're gonna pay them four hours a week not to work. That's all you're saying. You get paid when you work, or pay them extra two hours of shift or whatever it is, or week, or when they won't work, because if they do work, you're gonna pay them, period. It's always gonna, you've always paid them if they work. All you're saying is, the chief is coming to you and saying, the way I wanna run my department is, I wanna pay these people just when they work.
And that's sort of what you're doing, Butch, they don't get paid for the extra hours if they're on-call.
No, no.
They just get paid for the...
And he talks about these things.
And I'm not opposed to, they're getting paid time and a half, and it's the same situation, what he needs is somebody out there on Saturday and Sunday, that'd be a day's work, if he's doing four hours a day, and it wouldn't be getting time and a half, it'd just be getting straight time. Or if he made them take off on Friday, whoever's gonna be on-call, and that's their workday. But that's a management decision that he chooses not to do. It will be a benefit, they're working it, but they're getting time and a half for doing it instead of straight time, and, but that's just, what we have to do is what Tom, he put it pretty simple, if you wanna pay them for working or you don't.
And Michael, they do take off whoever has call on weekends, now, they do take off on Friday.
So, they're not getting time and a half?
No, no, that's what I'm saying. I don't understand, see, I missed the deal here somewhere, what, he was in opposition to what? To the unpaid...
To doing the, the on-call, paid on-call time for...
When you weren't called out.
For the police officers. They were getting, it was two hours per shift. So, if you were on-call, if Officer Nelson was on-call Tuesday and Thursday night, then he would get paid for two hours Tuesday night, two hours Thursday night of on-call, which would be time and a half of comp time. All right, and then when we came into the yearaways, Chief Collins said, okay, rather than work a forty-hour week and accumulate this comp time, I'm gonna take them back to a thirty-six-hour week and include those four hours of comp time for the week. So, now, the officer would work thirty-six hours, two hours of on-call time for one shift, two hours for another shift, gets paid for forty hours.
But to answer Mike's question, no, they take off the Friday, whoever pulls call like this Saturday, Sunday, they take off Friday.
And that is basically what the chief is doing now, he made them take off two hours twice a week, basically, take it off so that call, when you're getting that four hours of being on-call, you're just breaking even, but it costs four hours of patrol time. If you put it the same way, when you make that guy take off on Friday, that's costing you eight hours of him working out there.
I think he works the other, yeah.
So, it's just new here in the Bay, and I don't think it's a big deal at this point if they all take it. You want me to make that motion there?
Yes.
No, I don't want to. I'll make a motion that the police do away with their two-hour, their on-call time, do away with giving comp time for being on-call.
Do you wanna add?
With, I wanna add that with, with the idea that all certified officers take their share of the call.
I'll second that.
Who's seconding it?
I am.
Jim. Will you read that back, Marsha?
Well, yes, please, because I'm thinking, I'm not sure I've got it.
Marsha, would you try it this way?
Yep.
Chief made a motion, there shall be no more paid on-call hours, and that the chief shall take one of the on-call shifts a week, they call it a shift, or periods?
That's fine, that's fine, that'll save it.
That's all it is?
The chief will take...
One of the on-call duties that they divide up amongst the officers. The chief will now be on-call on a weekly basis, will that be on a weekly basis?
Yeah, that's fine. And, you know, the school resource officer will be on.
Thank you, Tom, that's easier for me, yes.
And keep in mind, you will be giving, if you're called out, you'll get your time and a half, one way or the other, you get that.
So that they do get compensated?
Oh, yeah, you have to get, that's...
That's only, that's fair.
Okay, that is fair.
We weren't taken away pay, we were just...
No.
Right.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, by a like sign? All right, motion passes. Rate increase for water, wastewater, introduction of the ordinance. What we need to do here is make a motion for a first reading by title owner.
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
That needs to be a roll call, because that's be two-thirds vote.
Okay, and the title of that is?
We have to vote on that motion first.
Okay, okay.
She gonna call roll or you call roll?
I'll call roll.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Ed Stout?
Yes.
Bill Sargent?
Yes.
Neil Lowry?
Yes.
Mike Nelson?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
So, the title is an ordinance to amend and fix rates for water and sewer service from the city of West Fork Water and Sewer System declaring an emergency and for other purposes. So, all we have done now is place this on its first reading, and thereby, we have followed the law that says it has to be introduced, a meeting before it's adopted. So, now, this ordinance is officially introduced, you won't vote on it again tonight, okay? The next thing you'll vote on is the public hearing notice, which we have to make a few decisions about, but if you wanna talk about it tonight, you absolutely should and may, the ordinance itself, you can certainly discuss it, but you won't have to vote on it again.
They pretty well discussed it before it was written.
Okay.
I think it's been discussed several times with the commission and the ordinance commission.
And this was initiated by the commission, per my request, so, and to be reviewed by the commission on three anniversary dates or whenever they need to.
And this was recommended by the governmental funding agencies that we're gonna be getting loans and grants from, and it shows good faith effort that we are serious about this, and it's gonna be expensive, and so, this will help them also with their files and justification of sending that money our way instead of to another part of the state.
Okay, all right, for the public hearing, which is required, we can have that public hearing within, is it ten days now, two weeks?
Well, we have to publish the notice ten days before the hearing, what you had discussed before is having the public hearing on the same day as the council meeting.
Yeah, we can do that.
So, that would be, that would be in the August meeting, so just, this could just go in the paper anytime in the next couple of days, and then that'll fulfill that requirement to have a notice published, and the rate actually has to be published. And so, if you guys can see from your notice that, it's a pretty long notice, because we've got the three different rates going in at three different times, but that'll have to be put in the paper, and I think you need to make some decisions, Jess, on what day you wanna do, which you can do it on the day of the meeting.
Which is the twelfth of August.
Which is the twelfth, and that's kinda how I put the default in there, but if you think you're gonna need a separate night to do that, then decide on another night, you know, at least, give Christie at least, what, fifteen days from now at least, so she can get the paper tomorrow, if you wanna do that.
Gives her a little over four weeks, from tonight.
So, we could do this, you know, we could start the hearing at six fifteen, and if it goes longer than six thirty, then we continue it and then go, and adjourn that and go into a regular council meeting, if we wanna do it on the second Tuesday. Certainly do that. We need, we need to also tell where we're gonna have this, so we have three places, really, we can meet, here, probably a little bit small, we could go to the fire station if that allows to come up there, and we could do it at the community center. The last one we had was at the community center, and there was a fair crowd there, so, but we need to decide that if we think there's gonna be a large turnout, we might need to just go to the community center.
There probably will be, because you're talking about people's pockets.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a turnout, I mean, realistically, we're talking about added money on, expenses, so there should be a turnout for that. So, we probably should just go to the community center and set it in.
Is that, is that good with everyone? Is the sound there good?
Six.
No?
I have probably a six even.
You'll do six or six fifteen?
It says six.
I think...
You can put whatever y'all want, though.
I think six, that's thirty minutes, that's, that's more reasonable than fifteen minutes.
That's fine, and what you can do is ask the mayor to, you're gonna have to adopt this ordinance after the public hearing, so that's one thing you know you're gonna do.
Right.
You may wanna keep other things short, just in case this goes long, and the rest of your meeting short.
I can do that. Mark, do you remember approximately how many people we seated at the fire station that evening?
Thirty-five, forty maybe?
Thirty-six, thirty-eight.
I was thinking it's eight fifty.
And we had tables set up that night, didn't you? You had...
We had tables set up at the front for you guys, but...
You did, the bike...
But just seating and the rest.
The bike thing, you had the tables, but the other, we didn't have tables except for them, yeah.
All right, well, I think we can make the acoustics work down at the community center. Butch, what can we take, I mean, this podium is portable, but didn't we have something else set up that one night? Did we take this with me?
We hired somebody.
Is that what we did? Okay. So, community center? All right, then we'll make sure, at six o'clock?
Yeah, there's plenty of parking in South Fork.
Had plenty of parking, there is.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point.
Well, those are the decisions you have to make about this, if y'all would then, if someone would make a motion to approve this notice, our agenda says resolution, but that's not required, so what we do wanna have is minutes reflect, though, that you approve the notice. Of course, the notice is gonna get published, and that'll be the ultimate proof, but just be extra careful since we're collecting rates, if someone could make a motion, and it would be as amended, so, Mayor, what I've got is, the location is West Fork Community Center. Does anyone know the address off the top of their head?
Two twenty-two Weber.
Two twenty-two Weber in West Fork. On August fourteenth at six P.M., maybe what, six P.M., all right, and then if you, if someone will approve that as amended, then we'll, for us, I guess, completely...
Make a motion that we approve it as amended. Make a motion that we approve it as amended.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed by like sign? And how, how much can we abbreviate this for the public notice?
This is the public notice.
All right, this is it. Okay. And you knew that, didn't you, Kristy?
Yeah, and you could surely make the print smaller, but they're gonna have words, aren't they? And I carved them way down, I really did, but, but what we're caught up with is a three rate, that we're doing three at once, which is a terrific way to do it. And I called our bond counsel, you know, Chef Russell, to make sure that was okay with him, and he, that was something that he supported as long as we'd use this method. So unfortunately, it's gonna cost you on the front end with the publication cost.
All right, we're done with that. All right, new business. This is just really kind of a, for your information on the policies and procedures for invoices and checks. So we're, we're trying to clean up as much as we can from our invoices to getting the checks signed and receiving goods and having signatures on, on invoices as they come in and so on. And so I'm taking on the check writing for everything but water and sewer. And then we still have in place, if I'm absent, the business manager can sign those. We have four people on the signature card. We have Christie, Butch, myself, and one of the city employees. So we're pretty well covered there, even in a time of emergency. And this will just go into our policies and procedures book. We don't need an action on it. So just for your information, all right. And then an updated tobacco policy, which you had in front of you. Our current tobacco policy basically said you can't smoke in this building and you can't smoke in cars. So it didn't even cover smokeless tobacco. And so this tobacco policy just expands that a little bit, a little bit, which also includes smokeless tobacco. And gives some authority to department heads where, you know, they can have break times, designated areas if they want to, put those into effect. But it's just to tighten up that tobacco policy a little bit. Part of this, why I put this together, and I'm asking you to, to think about this and discuss this and possibly pass it, is that I have had some complaints about smokeless tobacco. And being used by employees and so, and in public places and in front of, and in, in front of some of our residents, even talking to them, so just even one-on-one. So it's, it's, it's not a good image for us, for one thing. And it's not healthy for our employees. So if they can cut that back a little bit, that would be helpful for them as well. But again, Kristy, we need action on this to replace what's in our current policy with this.
We will have to bring a resolution forward to council next meeting if they're good with this to actually update our current personnel policy and add this to it.
Okay. Can you get that thing under control?
Do you need some glasses?
Why do we do that, Kristy, when we didn't on this comp time thing?
We'll need to do that on the time also. We'll need to actually update the handbook.
Why would we do them the, the same way?
We'll bring it all at the same time, yeah.
Okay. Mitch?
Were you saying naming the buildings, could it say all the city-owned buildings? Cause we haven't allowed smoking in the fire station for a long time.
It's all city-owned buildings.
Should be included all of the city-owned buildings.
Okay, the current one does not. This one will. So.
I was a favorite from all the.
Fire station, library, community center, here, gazebo at Riverside Park, maybe not.
They now already have one.
They do?
They do have one from the parks, not, not allowed to smoke in parks except in a designated area.
So I, is, are you entertain a motion on this?
I'll make it.
Is there a second? All right. Any further, any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed by like sign? All right.
So this is in effect now, or it's not till we get the resolution?
The policy says it's in effect as of today, but we'll get a resolution to actually update the employee handbook for the next meeting.
Kristy, can I, can we ask you to put this in everybody's hands? All right, and the last item, we've gotten kind of down here a little bit this part of the meeting, so I, I may do this every month, depending whether you say all right or boo me on this. Okay. City Council, July fourth, really old business. This is really old business. Council minutes dated nineteen fourteen. In nineteen fourteen, a hundred years ago, A.K. Sawyer was mayor, aldermen were E.A. Stockburger, A.P. Smith, Juneau Carter, E.C. Sample, D.M. Kittredge, C.R. Luther, and the marshal was J.T. Brown. The city was building concrete street crossings to connect all city sidewalks inside the corporation limits. A license to pedal for a day was one dollar. The license for a pool table was inching up from an original five dollars to a whopping twenty-five dollars a month. The fine for abusive language was five dollars or ten dollars, depending on the level of And the bill for street lamp service was twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, and the city levied a two-and-a-half mil tax.
Yep.
Business was a little easier back then.
West Fork is normal. Back then, it was a little rough.
I would like to thank Kay Rosetti, my best half, for putting this together, and I think she'll continue this. If I have your endorsement, we'll continue these relaxer ups every month.
Thank you.
Can we adjourn?
I'm in.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.